Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Russell County Commission for Wednesday, November 26, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. Start off with an invocation by Pastor Karen Seifert from Somerville United Methodist Church, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Darty. If you will please rise or remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, we just come before you this morning during a time that we pause to be thankful. Thankful for friends, thankful for family, and thankful for all that you do in our lives, all the blessings that we see and we don't see. Holy God, open our eyes so that we can see everything that you have for us. We're thankful for those that go out and risk their life every day to keep us safe, the police officers, the EMTs, the firefighters, and all the people behind the scenes. Holy God, we just ask that you are with them and bring them home safely. And at the same time that we are thankful, help us to be mindful. Mindful of those that have found themselves homeless and not sure where they'll sleep tonight while we cook Thanksgiving dinner. Mindful of those that are grieving and facing an empty chair at the Thanksgiving table. And mindful of those that are lonely and anxious, hurting, or forgotten. Holy God, we just ask that you pour out your comfort upon them and open doors that they didn't even see coming. Holy God, we give you thanks for the leadership in this room and all the things that come with being a leader for this county. God, as the agenda unfolds today, we ask that you give them compassion and wisdom to make good decisions. In Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen.
Everyone face the flag, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Seifert. Appreciate you this morning. We'll start off with public comments. We do have one. We have Ms. Pam Fair, who is with Safe Kids Columbus. Pam, if you'll step to the microphone, she wants to talk about funding allocation report and booster program. Just a second, we'll get, there you go.
There we go. Good morning. It's my great pleasure to be here today, and I want to thank the commission for your extension of a funding allocation for injury prevention in Russell County. We have a booster seat program that we brought to several schools in Russell County. Well, I'll show you those in the next slide, but we were just thrilled to go and talk with several schools, the children in the schools, and then the teams at the school. You guys have a great school system, both in the county and the city. What a wonderful opportunity it was. And so, the kids were, the best I've seen, I've been doing this a long time, and the kids in the schools were so polite and so receptive, and we taught them about the importance of using booster seats. I work for Piedmont Columbus Regional and our trauma department, you know, the data yields that children between four and 10 years old have a huge spike in motor vehicle traffic injuries and deaths, oftentimes because those children are not properly restrained in the vehicle. So, we actually went to the schools and talked to them about the importance of wearing a booster seat, what happens when you wear your seat belt, ill fitting, or you don't wear one at all, what happens to your organs, and all the things that can, you know, cause a lot of problems for your body if you're involved in a crash, and how the booster seat can really fix those things. So, we tried to, we tried to explain that to the children, and my job is to sell the booster seat to the children, make them want to have it. And so, and then we gave, we weighed each child in the school. We got their weight and height to make sure that they were the right age and weight and height for a booster seat, and if they were, they were given a coupon that allowed them to come to a distribution site to pick up their free booster seat. So, the next slide. So, this is at the distribution event where a parent just drove through with their coupon, and then the children received a booster seat. We had the information that we needed for the kids to be able to issue the booster seats, and had child passenger safety technicians, which is a certification that you need to have to be able to issue restraints appropriately, and so we issued restraints to families. And they were very thankful for the program, for the education their kids received, and for the county. We gave a lot of praise back to the commission for helping us make this happen. And next slide. And this will show you a little bit about, we educated 923 children and staff members in Russell County in that week-long event, and we went to Sherwood Elementary, Mount Olive Primary, Phoenix City Elementary, and Phoenix City Christian School. And you can see that the number that we educated versus the blue tells you how many families responded to the distribution event when we hosted the giveaway. And that's pretty common. So, I mean, you think, wow, a lot more kids were educated than came and got boosters. And this is, I've been doing this for a few decades, really, and this is pretty much what we see. But we actually issued 143 booster seats in two hours. So, we had a well-oil machine there where we were pushing the boosters out, and we talked with the parents about what Alabama law is, explained to them the importance of keeping their kids in the backseat. Then the parents actually got out and buckled their booster seat in their vehicle, and then off they went. So, a great use of the funding. I really appreciate the opportunity. We have more work to do here in this county as well. We didn't reach all the schools in the entire Russell County, both in the county and the city side, and we look forward to continuing this next year. So, hopefully we'll get some support to continue this on. And let's, let's hope that we see some reduction in injuries and deaths as associated with car crashes, which is the number one reason that families come to the hospital when they're hurt but not sick. They've been involved in a motor vehicle crash. That's the top mechanism of injury, and we're going after it straight on, and I really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you getting out into the county, and we would look forward to possibly getting this out to the other elementary schools at least into the county because we know we have several more. So, thank you for what you do, and I know you'll be asking for some funds here. So, keep that in mind, commissioners, as we go forward with that. So, thank you for the report, though. That's a big for us to know where the funds are going. So, thank you. All right. As Pam was flipping through her PowerPoint, it brought to mind that, you know, commissioners, I know several years ago, we didn't even have a screen and things, but now we've kind of gotten technology savvy a little bit with our iPads and our presentations. But Keith is out of town, our IT person is out of town with a family emergency, and Heidi has really stepped up, and just tell her thank you when you see her. She's really stepped up to make sure this meeting operates on the, on the way that it can, and these presentations in front of you. So, I think we kind of, we take it for granted sometimes. We'll make sure we don't thank Heidi for that. So, if everyone will, please remember to silence your cell phones, and if you take a call, please step out to take that. We want to say thanks to everyone for making the meeting happen, and we want to welcome all those that are here today, our elected officials, department heads, obviously our visitors and media. So, we're going to establish a quorum for this meeting by calling the roll. Ms. Wright?
District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Darty.
Here.
District 7 Screws.
Here.
District 6 Corbett.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, as you know, on Monday night, November 24th, we approve the agenda that you have in front of you, and it'll be the agenda we're working off of today. We'll start off with the approval of the minutes from the November 12th, 2025 Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion of my Commissioner Reed, second of my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you. I'll also, for the record, mention, I forgot to do this, that our county attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks, is with us today. So, next up, under Proclamations, Resolutions, and Presentations, the first one is the approval for a proclamation for Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church, 150-year anniversary. Commissioner Costello.
Thank you, Chair. If the commission would ask in for an approval of proclamation, Bethlehem Baptist, Missionary Baptist Church has been where it's located now for 150 years. Today, we have Mr. Sean Givens, Gavins, with us from the, from the church that, once upon, upon approval, I'd like it to be read and then also presented by the chair to Mr. Sean.
All right, you have, you have the motion for Mr. Costello to approve this proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Ms. Wright, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas Sunday, October 19th, 2025, marked the 150th anniversary of Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church, 3694 U.S. Highway 80, West Phoenix City, Alabama. The church's origins trace back to members of the La Dounia community who prioritized deepening their spiritual connection with God. Whereas, the church has been blessed with many remarkable families and individuals who have dedicated themselves to serving Jesus, whether through active participation or ongoing support behind the scenes. Whereas, we, the members of the Russell County Commission, are honored to have the opportunity to withstand our sincere esteem and best wishes to the members of the Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church in Phoenix City, Alabama, on the occasion of their 150th church anniversary, adopted by the Russell County Commission this 26th day of November, 2025.
All right. We'll go ahead, and if you'll step down, we'll present that to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The reason why I recognize him is because the commission was extremely responsive, and me reaching out to him, and in a manner that he pays, I would be in direct in all the right areas to get this accomplished. I will take it back to the church and, of course, thank each and every one of you for your thought and responsibility.
Yes, sir. Thank you. 150 years is a long, I think, I think Gentry was the first member there.
I like it. I like it.
I turned the first earth.
There you go. There you go. Groundbreaking ceremony, but thank you, and make sure everyone knows we appreciate them.
The hardest problem with your church is getting out on Highway 80.
Hey, that's when you, you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, the next is the approval for a proclamation. Mr. Kenneth L. Thunderbird, who was a former county attorney. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, at this time, I'd make a motion that we present the proclamation that we have in front of us, approve it anyway, and present it at a later date when maybe some of the family can be here.
I second that motion.
All right. We have a motion of Commissioner Lee, second of my Commissioner Reed. Is there any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, we'll hold the reading on that until the family's here.
Right.
All right. Next up, we have a county resolution to intervene in the SSUT lawsuit. Commissioners, as I spoke on Monday night, this was requested through ACCA. The commission consider approval of this resolution, supporting the continued fight to maintain the SSUT, simplify seller use tax, which is very important to our budget. This is, this deals with purchases online, Amazon, other, other companies where you buy things online. It really funds our, a big part of our budget. So, at this time, Ms. Wright, will you please read the resolution?
Whereas, the Alabama Simplified Seller Use Tax Remittance Act, codified at, codified at the section 4023-191, Code of Alabama, 1975, established a process by which the state of Alabama collects used taxes from eligible sellers on behalf of Alabama consumers. And whereas, on August 12th, 2025, the city of Tuscaloosa, the school district of the city of Tuscaloosa, the city of Mount Brook, filed a lawsuit in the Circuit Court of Montgomery County, Alabama against Vernon Farnett in his official capacity as commissioner of the Alabama Department of Revenue, asking the court to direct Commissioner Farnett to disqualify particular business entities from the SSUT program. And whereas, on the 10th of 2025, the court imposed a 30-day deadline from any other interest parties to file, to file motions to intervene on this litigation. And whereas, the SSUT program has been a central source of revenue for Russell County, and the plaintiff's lawsuit, if successful, would jeopardize the county's ability to maintain current levels of governmental services it provides to the public. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Russell County Commission that the county is direct to take all necessary actions, whether by itself or as part of a joint undertaking, to intervene as defendant in the SSUT delegations, and to redact the county's interest in its critical revenue.
Commissioners, you have heard the resolutions. Are there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion of my Commissioner Costello, second of my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, commissioners, I'll get that signed, and we'll get the administrator to transmit that to Montgomery, to ACCA. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the, nothing under discussion. We took care of all that Monday night. Move right on to the selection of chair and vice chair. At this time, we'll open the nominations for the chair position.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I move that we reelect Chance Carter as our chairman. Since he done outstanding job, we want to give him another try.
Another try.
Give him a try.
I second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the vote of confidence, and try to keep doing good. We need to do a vice chair now. I'll open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chair.
Your nominee? Yes, sir. Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Lee, sorry.
I nominate Commissioner Costello to serve again.
All right. We have a motion for Commissioner Costello.
Not really a motion, it's a nomination.
Seconded by four people, so, okay. Seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is done. We'll move now to the commission voting order, which always seems to be fun. This will be the order in which the commissioners will vote when we call for a vote. So, if you will, each commissioner outside of the chair pull one number from that, and that will determine, you can't look at it, Scott, put it back, so.
I didn't.
Like he was looking at it, didn't he? He's gonna, he's gonna make sure he got four again.
I didn't want four.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is always fun. It's almost like Christmas time.
Hey, there's not one left.
Good, you vote first then.
All right. For, for the sanity of the administrator, if you're number one, will you please let, raise your hand? Number one. All right. Commissioner Darty, number two. Commissioner Reed, number three. Commissioner Costello, number four.
Hey, I keep going down.
Commissioner Lee, and number five, Commissioner Chambers. So, number six is Commissioner Screws. He likes that number. Higher number, the better, right? All right. So, we have that taken care of, and that will go official at the next meeting, so.
Actually, actually, the number seven, the chair thinks it's good, but it's really the worst.
It's a hard one when you get in a town.
Because if you got a tie, it's all, it's all up to you. You can't blame it on somebody else.
You're right about that. The number one, one and seven are the worst two numbers, for sure.
I know.
All right. Next up is the greenup grant agreement through the extension office. Ms. Wright?
Yes, commissioners, on Monday night, I shared with you that the extension office has applied for a grant and been awarded to plant 15 trees around the walking trail at the Steel Sports Complex. The trees will be planted to provide shade to those who enjoy walking around the trail. So, my recommendation is for the commission to approve the MOU with the extension office and to allow the chair to sign the MOU.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion of my Commissioner Darty.
Second.
Second of my Commissioner Reed. Commissioner.
And we asked them to plant them back, floating up so the root smell of the tree.
Yes, sir.
We, actually, when Jennifer Davidson, we got to give her credit because she really went after this woman, the extension office, had actually met with Sean out there as well and, and looked at making sure that it would not be close enough for many years to affect the walking trail. So, hopefully we can take care of that with our engineer, Bart and Ray.
In what, 15 or 20 years? We will provide shade for people walking.
True, true. Got to start it somewhere, I guess. And we are starting with trees that are a little larger than just a seedling tree. These, these have some growth to them, so.
I get it. We're gonna, we're gonna dig the holes with the backhoe on it. Because the bigger the.
They're actually included, the planting of the trees are actually included. They're bringing the machine to do it, so.
Well, I guess they know what they're doing then, because the bigger you dig the hole, the better chance the tree will have a survival.
So, we'll make sure, yeah, the people that are coming are actually the tree place that are actually planting them, so should be able to do it, which is a lot better for our folks, so. All right.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Can we put umbrellas out there for, till the trees grow?
I like that. Umbrellas for people to stop it, because that, that's been the complaint for years, is that they love the walking trail, but there's no shade. Well, this has taken a step in that direction, for sure. Yeah, so we do have the pavilion out there, and there's a couple of spots to stop. Now, we have pickleball courts. They could take a break and go play pickleball court. Pickleball, so. All right. Next up is the request.
Did we approve it?
Did I already vote on that?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, now it's approved. Next is a request to tear down the old house at 1705 Fourth Street South.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Motion of my Commissioner Lee, second of my Commissioner Darty. Under discussion, just for the public's interest, this was a piece of property that was purchased because of the proximity to county, other county property, and we knew with going into this purchase that the house would not stay because the house is in really bad shape. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Next up is the transfer request for the appraisal office. Chris.
Good morning, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, this is a request to transfer $11,000 from line item 199 miscellaneous services provided by others to line item 409 subscriptions, and it's also a request to approve us to give it, to sign a contract to get the TRP online valuation services for commercial real estate.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion of my Commissioner Screws, second of my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, Chris, you also had the transfer, budget transfer. Okay, will you go ahead with that? Did you call the numbers? Okay, I missed the number, sorry.
We did it all at one time.
I didn't hear the number, sorry. I was focusing on what you were saying, sorry. All right. Next up is the project money request. Commissioner Screws.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to take $500 of my project money and give to E3 Enhancement Learning. And what they do is feed the people at Gaines Chapel, which is right up the street up there.
All right.
And that's in the form of a motion.
All right. We have a motion, Commissioner Screws, to do $500. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Commissioner Reed. I think we have some discussion.
In addition to that, I'd like to give $500 of my project money to fund E3 enrichment.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to contribute $200 to it as well.
Okay.
And I too would donate 300.
All right. I'm trying to keep up with this. It's going to be hard.
1500.
Okay, anyone else before we move forward?
369.
All right. I'll do, I'll do 300 as well, so.
14.
18. 18.
$1,800. That'll be $1,800. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. We have nothing under, County Engineer Sean? Okay. Nothing under sanitation. Randy? Randy will bring back in our December meetings the schedule for any dumpsters and things for the, for Christmas time, so. We've already talked about that a little bit. Madam Administrator, do you have anything else? All right. Madam Attorney? All right, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, I would recommend that we go into executive session to discuss the consideration that the governmental body is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. As a licensed attorney in the state of Alabama, I would say that this exception is applicable to the planned discussion. I would expect us to be in executive session between fifteen and thirty minutes, and we will need to come back and take action following executive session.
All right, so we'll adjourn from, we'll adjourn after.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion my Commissioner Reed, second to my Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will finish up with the announcements real quick. Any other items for Commissioners' discussion that we need to talk about? All right, under announcements, we have the closing for Thanksgiving Day, which will be Thursday and Friday of this week, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. All county buildings will be closed. Sanitation schedule, just a little bit different. The office will be closed Thursday and Friday. Thursday garbage will not be picked up, but the Thursday garbage will be picked up on Friday, so the, just the trucks will be working on Friday. All right, under the Russell County Sports Complex, we have the pickleball ribbon cutting ceremony, which will happen after this meeting at eleven AM this morning. Looking forward to that. We, I got two text messages yesterday asking if the courts were open, so looking forward to doing that. We have a couple of different events. We're Pancake Breakfast with Santa in the Fort Mitchell area on December sixth at nine AM at the Fort Mitchell Community Center next to the Fire Department. We have the Crawford's Breakfast with Santa same morning, December sixth at nine AM from nine to noon at the Crawford Community Center. We also have the By City Christmas Parade, which will start here on Broad Street and go over El to Broadway in Columbus as normal. That will start at ten AM on December sixth. Christmas lighting events in the county, this continues to grow. We now have, the first one will be in Crawford, at Crawford Square at six PM on Tuesday, December second. That will start around five thirty or so with music and all, and then as soon as it gets dark, the lighting. The next one will be in La Donia, which will be that Thursday, December fourth. Same thing, music starts a little bit, the lighting will be a little after six when it gets dark. The Steel Courthouse skips the day. That will be on Saturday, December the sixth, at the old Russell County Courthouse. Again, that one will start a little bit before six and lighting when it gets dark. Fort Mitchell Tree Lighting will be on Sunday this year, Sunday, December seventh, at the Fort Mitchell Community Center, which is again next to the Fort Mitchell Fire Department. That one starts at four PM with festivities and the light when it gets dark, and they will also have the Russell County High School Band there playing for that event, so excited to have that. Then we've moved to Hertzboro. Hertzboro will be the next weekend, on Friday, December twelfth, and, and that one's at six PM Central Time. Keep in mind, Hertzboro is Central Time. Six PM, as it gets dark, they'll light it, and then the next morning, they have the Hertzboro Christmas Parade, which starts at ten AM Central Time in Hertzboro, December thirteenth, Saturday. One other note is on December twentieth, Fort Mitchell will have a movie night with the movie Elf, and that will be December twentieth, Saturday, at six thirty, when it gets dark, they'll start the movie, the area behind the community center in Fort Mitchell next to the Fire Department. Any other announcements that we missed?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I did ask Judge Strickland, we can use the courtroom for the executive session.
All right, Commissioners, we are in executive session. We'll come back to adjourn from this after we're done.